For watching this shirt, I would do it right.
Yeah, I was worried though for good, it probably didn't take as long as I thought, but I was a little worried about it now.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
Wasn't well thought out. But it was, it was, it was quite amusing that.
We'll be in the shares for next, next month.
I'm so frustrated in here.
Get the.
All resembling members of the council.
So then I had the discussion is, you know, cause parents come to playgrounds with their kids, it really should be adult friendly.
So they actually had an adult side playground at my dorms.
Are you, Marlon? Alright, that's very.
So everything was just like adult sides, it was fantastic.
So you didn't have to worry about like leaving and freaking yourself.
I mean, yes, we still did, I'm sure, because we were probably not in our best state of mind at all times.
Great, great, you know, sleep deprived.
Yeah, it's very tired, very, very tired, studying a lot and whatnot.
All turn to the education, you know, those kind of things.
All those things, very taxing.
Oh, I suppose it is time to stand for the flag, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Roll call, Justin.
Andrew Brugman.
Here.
Sammy Simpson.
Here.
Lisa Schmidt.
Here.
Sammy Peterson.
Here.
Kimberly Bishop.
Here.
Thank you very much. The city of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was so excited.
Nope.
We are called to order. Uh, seven oh one, thank you for keeping me on the straighteners. Alright, now the city of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in this meeting room as required by the Nebraska state law. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Ma- Meeting Act, even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up items on the agenda in order they are presented, however, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record and agenda topic you wish to speak on. This meeting is being recorded. Alright, review and action of agenda, did anyone have a chance to look at the agenda?
No.
I move to accept the April twenty second, twenty twenty five proposed agenda.
Second.
And remove Kimberly second that we accept the twenty, April twenty second, twenty twenty five proposed agenda, any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, April eighth, twenty twenty five.
I will make motion to accept the prior meeting minutes for April eighth, twenty twenty five and waive the reading.
Second. Kimberly moved, turney second, to accept the prior meeting minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty five. Turney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carried. Communications, Derek?
Um, Dr. Sheldon at Shell Code today, he's going to start crack sealing and repairing potholes tomorrow before the paving is done.
Okay, armor coating.
Armor coating. And then will be closed the twenty fifth for Arbor Day, the city office will. May fifth, at five thirty, there will be a parking wrecks meeting. Um, the May third, starting at nine is the park cleanup. We're doing the Arbor Day events, May sixth at ten thirty. And then there's a cemetery board meeting. Uh, the May thirteenth at five fifteen before the council meeting. May seventeenth is the cemetery cleanup.
What day did you say?
May seventeen.
And park, sorry, park and rec was when?
Uh, May third, at nine, both over at nine, starting at nine, yeah. And then we did not get any bids on the airport project, so Jeff is going to give a statement that they want to let us know that they didn't figure it out.
Okay, perfect. That's unfortunate. Yeah. And the, did we get the gravel in for the?
Okay.
It won't be until July, I think.
What would you say was May third, I must remember.
The park, the park cleanup.
Oh, park cleanup, okay.
Yep.
Wait, May, May third is a Saturday, that's all, it's all Saturday?
Yes.
Park and rec meeting?
Yeah.
Whoa, sorry, park and rec meeting.
The park and rec meeting is May fifth.
Okay.
At five.
At six thirty.
Six thirty, sorry.
Sorry, I'm not moving that fast. Park cleanup, May third.
Okay.
Thank you.
A lot of fun stuff coming up. Alright, thank you very much for that communication. Andrew, do you have anything first?
I do not.
Kimberly?
Nothing.
Turney?
Um, library had their meeting, they didn't have a whole lot going on, they're doing their internship again with Cecilia Putman. Um, I didn't remember my notes, so I kind of forgot anything else to talk about.
Pretty much, yes.
Did, did you have anything to add from the beginning?
No, I mean, that was pretty much what they talked about, and they were gonna figure out what they were gonna do in the alley.
Yeah. It's all that, maybe, up weak weeds though.
Just weeds and what they're, if they're gonna put something back there, if they want more gravel to be laid down.
Or if they're gonna do a little garden or?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, alright, and Sam?
Yeah, the CRA then on, uh, April fifteenth, um, they approved their annual tip report, uh, moving forward to us, it's on our agenda tonight. Uh, they discussed the restrictive covenants, uh, for the CRA subdivision, they looked at, um, Grassland Ridge's previous covenants and Goffenbergs' examples. They're gonna try to figure out like group pitches and those kind of things, as, as, as well as minimum sizes for properties and homes. And then they discussed, uh, order or unless they're gonna develop, uh, properties out there, right now the plan is where the infrastructure is, is Pearl Street, so we'll start with everything that's basically touching Pearl Street, I believe is the initial plan, and then move up from there. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. That's, that's another exciting thing. Financials, Jesse?
Um, this will be our six months financials, so that's kind of good, made a point. Um, we also have, after the auditors, um, had completed, that we had a couple additional adjustments to finish up with the adjusting entries, so that's where that February president report, after the auditors, is going there to get it in sync, and so that's what that is.
Okay.
And I think everything else was pretty straightforward.
Alright. And please note that we accept the financials as presented. Any public comments today? Alright, there being no unfinished business, we will move on to new business. Action and discussion on resolution twenty five dash zero four dash zero one, a resolution of the mayor and the council of city of Grant. Perkins County accepting their parade duties as set forth by the Nebraska state statute thirty nine dash thirteen, this one pretty much isn't the same as, as it has been in previous years.
Remove to accept resolution number twenty five oh four oh one, accepting appropriate duty duties, set forth, it's down as thirty nine dash thirteen five nine.
Second.
Andrew removed, and Sam second to accept resolution twenty five dash oh four dash oh one. Sam second, any discussion? Turney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, action and discussion on interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between the county and the city of Grant fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, your up, sir?
Alright. Things going well there? Good, outstanding. Um, alright, so I'm, uh, trying to get kind of a head start on things, I don't know how it was historically done, but, um, our fiscal year with the county ends at the end of June, on June thirtieth, going to, starting the new one, the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year starts July one for us. I know it's different, October one is your guys' so. Um, basically, there's kind of, kind of several things at play here. I've already gone to the other villages and explained who I am, what I do, you guys all know me for the most part, so I'll save you the spiel. Um, but anyway, my, my primary focus is, um, obviously continuing to provide, you know, law enforcement and peacekeeping services here in the city, as well as the county and our other villages. Um, you know, in order to do that, you know, I've, I've gotta have, gotta have guys, so. The climate in the current, uh, state of things in Nebraska and across the nation is still hard to find guys that wanted to do this job. Um, and I, you know, it's probably not any one individual thing, but perhaps the value of the circumstances and the higher geopolitical climate and social stuff, so anyway. There are not people beating down the door, uh, looking for applications, and the state of Nebraska has complicated the process in their infinite wisdom, um, jumping on the bandwagon that a lot of other states municipalities did with the, uh, basically defund the police and all that kind of stuff, well, Nebraska kind of jumped on that bandwagon as well, they legislated a bunch of restrictions on, you know, how, how our trainees conducted, how a hiring process goes, all that kind of stuff. It used to be, back when I started, at the end of twenty ten, um, a deputy or a police officer could come on board with an agency and they would have three hundred and sixty-five days to complete their, at that time, it was fourteen weeks of training at the Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center in Grand Island. Um, which meant that, as I did for the former sheriff, I worked for him until August, so I had like seven months under my belt, eight months, and then I went off to training, I completed training, and so. That was good because for small agencies, this is especially important because you gotta know if a guy's gonna work or a gal's gonna work out. And the way it is now, you have to hire the person, they can't do anything until they've gone through training, and then at that point, then they've got a probationary period and stuff like that, so. When you hire somebody, that's, you call them green or rookie, whatever, you are hoping and praying that not only are they gonna make it to training, but they're also gonna be able to cut muster on the street too, and that's kind of a gamble, so. The way things are now, guys that already have certifications, that are already certified, already working in the state, they're worth their weight in gold, and, um, there's, there's definitely some fool's gold out there, and there's dudes that, and, and gals that bounce around from agency to agency, we do not want those people here. Um, I, I by no means intend to lower my hiring standards just to bring more bodies on. Uh, you can look ten miles to the north and see what that result is, so we're not going there, and, uh, basically, in order to bring good people on and guys that are, that are, are worth it, I've got to be able to pay them. And, uh, just, that's just the nature of things, and not only pay them, but other benefits as well, and you kind of gotta sweeten the pot for them, so. That's, that's kind of my primary focus, is bringing qualified people that are gonna be an asset to sheriff's office, to our community as a whole, to the city, so that you guys are getting what your, your money's worth out of it, so. Kind of looking back, um, historically, you can, you can pull out in your packet there, I promise what I sent Jesse is not as fuzzy as, I don't know if it, it looks bad in your copy?
No, great.
Okay.
But that's okay.
What that was, was the twenty-four, twenty-five contract that we are currently running on right now. Um, on the back there's a schedule of monthly payments, which is currently right now, we're paying eighty, the city's paying eighty-seven, ninety-four, and seventy-five cents. And I think on the back of that, you will find a spreadsheet that I put together that shows our ten-year historical average going back to the fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. So you can see what the city of Grant was paying, um, during those periods, and kind of the trends of where it was going. I know the sheriff's office was doing a lot of like ordinance enforcement stuff, which required a lot, a lot more of our attention. Uh, we were doing that in the villages as well, and then that dropped off, you'll see, and there's a big, there's a big dump from the eighteen, nineteen to the nineteen, twenty year. I think we dropped it out, one, five, five point seven percent, so. Since then, um, we've held or climbed gradually, last year we did not increase the budget.
Right.
Um, and basically what I'm proposing for the twenty-five, twenty-six year is a six percent increase in the budget. Average that out over this proposed year and the current year that we're in right now, it's three percent year-over-year, which I think is pretty reasonable. Um, looking around at other municipalities, what they're paying for police services and stuff like that. Uh, city of Imperial, for instance, is paying half a million dollars and renewing three officers, so. Um, right now, we've got myself and two deputies, so, uh, I intend to increase that number, which obviously will give us more attention, um. I don't think you have it, but I printed off, just for, just for my reference as a talking point here, just kind of the calls for service that have occurred, basically from the beginning of the year through the end of March, and, uh, let's see, in the month of January, we had fifty-seven calls for service. Um, in February, we had forty-nine, and in March, we're upwards around seventy-one, so. Grant definitely gets the lion's share of our attention, we're here, um, you know, I live here, I've got deputy, and I'll see the deputy of Imperial. Um, obviously, we want to try to get our deputies to live here in town, it's kind of nice, but, um, I may be kind of over, over elaborating on things, but, um, I think that a six percent increase is justified, and you guys are certainly gonna get your money's worth out of us, and. Um, I just, I wanna be abundantly clear that if there's any issues, complaints, gripes, comments, whatever, my door's always open, my phone's always on, so, uh, you guys are more than welcome to reach out. If you have a constituent complain to something like that, that maybe didn't go through our channels, you're more than welcome to bring it up to me, um, like I said, the door's always open, so. Yeah, that's kind of where things are at, so what I intend to do is, um, I will draft up a twenty-five, twenty-six contract, uh, with that six percent in- increase. It will have a schedule of payments, which are going to be, we're going to hold at our current rate now, where's that, eighty-seven, ninety-four, ninety-five. Um, they will hold it back through October, and then it's gonna jump up after that, which will give an offset of basically, um, over, over a twelve-month average, it'll be, uh, ninety-three, twenty-two, and eighty-three cents, so we're talking about a change of five hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month. It's, you know, averaging over those twelve months, so we gotta do a little bit of math to get it to work for October, but that's okay.
I, I, I think it's great, cause for the city to have its own department, it'd be like a perennial half a million dollars for similar services.
Yeah, like it, it would probably cost just our contract, it would cost that much just to contract dispatch services here, it's, everything is very expensive, and of course, you know, price of eggs and all that stuff, so.
Well, and the technology alone is, is.
Yes, and, and I, and I will credit, uh, my predecessor, Jim was very big on technology, and, um, basically, I, I, I walked into a women's fall position up there, there's so much great stuff, we have so many good assets, and, uh, we are by far the front leading agency in this area, and we just, we have all the cool whiz-bang high-speed stuff that really makes our jobs easier, so we can focus on actually being out patrolling and enforcing and not tied up at the office doing reports and stuff like that, so.
Or even to find someone, you have to, that technology to find out, you know, are they at the house, are they located somewhere? You gotta have that technology.
Uh, we, we basically, we're, we're using AI now to help write our reports, so it's super awesome. Um, this thing, if I had this recording, it would be, it would be transcribing everything I'm talking about, I can go back to the office, I can tell it what to do, and it will literally create a police report based upon this interaction right now. It's about a, a time savings of about ninety percent for us, so it's super awesome, which means we can be out on the street more and raise our, and, you know, tutoring crime and, you know, investigating and forcing as needed, so.
I have a question for you, so you hire somebody, and then you send them fourteen weeks of training, and who pays the training? We pay workers. Candidates' training, and then an individual's gonna be gone for fourteen weeks, do we, are we, are we able to pay those people while they're in training? Well, okay, well, I mean, who, who, who could take fourteen of them off?
Yeah, so basically, we, 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 we're letting a lot of, a lot of money ride on a pony we've never seen run. And hoping that it finishes the rest.
Well, the state statute, I understand that, so that's what we're, we're, the cards were dealt, but I just wanna make sure I understand, it makes sense, you gotta, you know, one, I couldn't take fourteen weeks off and not get paid to go to training.
Right.
Um, so.
And, and it used to be that, um, there were guys that were self-sponsored and go through it, and it's almost like college for them.
Sure.
You know, um, some of them were part-time jobs at night and stuff like that, but now that it's, it fills up so fast, cause everybody has to get stuffed into a class for training, and, uh, it's just, it's really complicated process, so, like I said before, these guys that are already certified, guys and gals, um, they, they are truly a commodity around here, and they're, they're rare, so. To, to attract one and keep one, you know, that's the other half of a money box, and we've got to be able to pay them to compete with places like Omaha and Lincoln and the State Patrol. Um, you know, I mean, I could go work for Lincoln PD right now and make a hundred grand, and that's just walking through the door, so there's always that allure, but of course, that's on the other side of the state, you know? So.
More issues.
Yeah, yeah, cost of living's higher.
Is your call, is it, I, call is the bane of healthcare, and we always get called like after, like, it's almost always after hours. Is there like, I mean, is it, is it, is it, you know, when the sun sets, is that what you're, do you get more frequent calls, is it just throughout the day, or is there more, is there more in the evening?
Well, it, it really depends, and, and, like, this monthly report, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll send you guys a new one with the next, um. With the next, uh, next month's agenda, so you guys will see that, but you'll see what time these calls occur, it really varies, um, you know, and a lot of these calls that, that you'll see on here, you know, they may be calls that we receive, but also a lot of them are self-initiated too, so it's, it's us getting out there and doing traffic stops and intervening when we see unsafe or unlawful activity or behavior going on, um. You know, so, we're, we're, we're busy, and like I said before, Grant definitely gets the lion's share of our, it's just we're the hub of activity here, so.
Run two highways, two probably doesn't help.
Yeah, and, you know, we're coming this summer, and we get a lot of, a lot of traffic comes through Grant, going to the lake, we're gonna have a movie track and a casino before long, and we're gonna get a lot of traffic and probably fallout from the vice that's associated with the theft of establishments, we're gonna get people coming down here.
Are you sure you don't need more?
Yeah, trying to be reasonable here.
I'll be back later, don't worry.
And, and, and I, I am, I am shorthand right now, so I, I do, I do not have, um, you know, a wage overhead that's oppressive or anything right now, but I'm planning ahead to be able to set and get more guys, and I gotta be able to pay them, so.
Well, I think it's important to point out, it's not a nine-to-five job, you know, you're in the middle of dinner at home, and you get a phone call, and you gotta leave, you know, so there's odds, or, or you just went to bed.
That's when the call happens.
Exactly.
Literally, when you sit down, yeah, that's when, you'll go off.
Exactly, so.
You can ask my daughter here, she's seen it happen more than once.
Crime never sleeps.
No, no, and that's, that's the cost of doing business, and, you know, I, I, you know, we're, everyone that, that works here fully understands that. Um, but that's also part of a, you know, another angle I'm trying to work with, with my budget and stuff, is finding ways to, to, uh, compensate these guys when they're having to take calls and stuff, cause, you know, we, we, I'm trying to delineate when people take call, I take call every morning from four in the morning till when I come on duty, you know, but the guy that worked the night before takes call from when he's done until four in the morning, and it just kind of works out that way, and sometimes the phone rings, sometimes it doesn't, you know, and more often it doesn't, uh, but when it does, you gotta jump to and, and be out there and take care of it, so. It's, uh, it's the nature of, of law enforcement in small town, so. We love it, and, uh, right, right now, I've, I've got a good complement of guys, and I wanna keep building that, and, uh, you know, I feel like the people here deserve the best, and I wanna try to do that to them.
Yeah, I agree, so what do you need for us today?
Um, just structure for him as to whether or not you guys are okay with this increase, or if you want to negotiate that price to complete the contract to be back on the agenda on the final review.
Okay. I guess so.
There is, there is some stipulation.
Do we need a motion or anything?
Um, you can just get in directions to.
What do you guys think?
I think averaging out to say that six-point average over three years thinks more than reasonable, three percent range over two, I think it's more reasonable.
Yeah, okay. Good to go?
If, if you just wanna make a motion to table this, then I'm, when do you think you'll find that back?
Yeah, for the next meeting. That'll be on this.
Thirteen, so you'll have it the week before, so.
Okay, yeah, and the process with that is, I'll, I'll bring two copies of it, I'll have you guys sign it, and then I'll bring those copies to the commissioners, they'll execute it, and then I'll fight to get back with one copy. And I'm doing an unincumbent process with the other villages as well, so they only meet once a month, so it's a little more time to continue, but I figured coming in early and hidden it out there is probably not a bad idea.
Yeah, and it helps us too when it comes to budget time, so appreciate that.
Um, I will go ahead and make a motion then to table this topic until our next meeting on May the thirteenth.
Okay. Camera move, turney second, that we table the interlocal agreement for law enforcement for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six to May thirteenth, any more discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Sheriff. Alrighty. Action and discussion on acknowledgement of the city of Grant community redevelopment authority tax implement by the annual report.
So, this report is due to, by statute, to specific taxing entities, so that they can keep track of what is happening within the tip. And we are required to, I advise, the formal report. Um, this, it's still, we don't have, it's just our first tip project still on here, so, um, as it, we continue to add more, it'll get more extensive, but. And then we just, yeah, we need to have you guys recognize that you received it, and, um, I can try and answer them.
They didn't move to, they, they would move forward, like I said earlier, I think one thing that's interesting at the bottom of this is, I never realized that, you know, forty-nine point two percent of the properties in Grant are considered white or substate, or like lets you know like how bad we do this program to.
Yeah.
You know, improvements.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's huge.
Yeah.
Like, how we need that, I'm one only doing this subdivision, but also like to improve it and drop it down, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's why I work here. Agreed. Okay.
Um, I'll, it's moved to accept action on acknowledgement of the city of Grant community redevelopment authority tax increment, regular financing, and reports.
Second. Turney moves, Sam, second, that we acknowledge that we have received the city of Grant community redevelopment authority tax increment by the annual report, any discussion? Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, thank you, that's another exciting part of the review. Alright, action and discussion on mayor appointment of the West Central Nebraska Development District, city of Grant representative being Derek Bergman, and alternate myself, Kimberly Bishop.
I'll go.
Okay?
Can you make that motion? I suppose so, uh, I will, I'll make a motion to, uh, take action on the mayor's appointment for West Central Nebraska Development District, city of Grant representative being Derek Bergman, and alternate myself, Kimberly Bishop.
Awesome, okay. Kimberly move, turney second, that we, uh, have Derek Bergman be our representative for W C M D D, and Kimberly Bishop be our alternate, any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Good thing.
Turney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, action and discussion on resolution twenty five dash zero four dash zero two, appointment of the. All right, action and discussion on resolution twenty five dash zero four dash zero two, appointment of mean board of directors Derek Bergman and with Derek Bergman being that director, and alternate director Sims. Sims, if that's what we do.
Yep.
All right, always to accept action on resolution twenty five dash oh four dash oh two, an appointment of mean board of directors Derek Bergman and alternate director Sam Sims.
Second.
Attorney moves, Sam, second, that we accept resolution twenty five dash zero four dash zero two, appointment of mean board of direction, directors Derek Bergman and alternate Samuel Sims. Any discussion?
If you're not getting emails yet, it'll be happening before.
Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrew?
Good thing.
Motion carried. Did everyone have a chance to review bills and claims?
Yes.
Yeah.
Make a motion to pay the bills and claims in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
All second. Kimberly moved, attorney second, that we accept bills and claims in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Any discussion? Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are adjourned at seven-thirty.
Whoa.
I said it by law, or if you want it.
You should have.
I work on my.
Recording stopped.